Okay, folks, I think we are set to go. Good evening and welcome to tonight's council session. Welcome, Honorable Grayden Nicholas and Mrs. Nicholas, guests, residents, and media. May I have the approval of the agenda, please? Deputy Mayor Schreier. Moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Luck. All those in favor, or sorry, can't see. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. I have a few comments this evening. And I'd like to say that the town of Kispamssis is pleased to support the St. John Sea Dogs in their bid to host the 2022 Memorial Cup, the National Major Junior Hockey Championship. If the bid is successful, the Qplex would serve as the top practice facility for the tournament, which is scheduled for next June. To those who do BMX bike jumping, the jump park, so the park will be closed on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so that the work is completed. If anyone is interested in bringing their shovels and tools and wanting to help out, tomorrow night, or Friday night, sorry, from four to seven, you're welcome to give a hand there. In Vision St. John, the Regional Growth Agency has launched a new marketing campaign to promote our area. The agency's version of the popular favorite Down By The Bay showcases the urban beauty of St. John, the only city on the world-famous Bay of Fundy, and the amazing towns, including Kispamssis, that surround it. If you haven't yet seen this video, you can find it by Googling "Down By The Bay, St. John." This evening, it is my distinct privilege and pleasure to welcome the Honorable Grayden Nicholas and his wife Beth to our council chamber. Mr. Nicholas earned a Bachelor of Science from St. Francis Xavier University, a Bachelor of Law from the University of New Brunswick, and a Master's of Social Work from Wilford-Laurier University. He argued cases at all levels, including at the Supreme Court of Canada, and was a provincial court judge from 1991 to 2009. He was Lieutenant Governor of New Brunswick from 2009 to 2014, becoming the first Indigenous person to hold this office. He has received honorary degrees from St. Francis Xavier, Wilford-Laurier, Mount Allison, and UNB. Numerous awards have recognized his longstanding community service, including the New Brunswick Human Rights Award, the Fredericton YMCA Peace Medallion, the 125th Anniversary of the Confederation of Canada Medal, and the Queen's Golden Jubilee Medal. He is a member of the Order of New Brunswick and the Order of Canada, and currently serves as Chancellor of St. Thomas University. Please join me in welcoming Honorable Grayden Nicholas. Honorable Grayden Nicholas, if you would come to the podium, and if you would do us the honor of reading our treaty recognition.
Well, first of all, your worship, thank you very much for the invitation of you and your council and your community here. This is a beautiful area of our province, and it is an honor for me, of course, to read the land acknowledgement for you. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Kispamssis exists on the traditional territory of the Wallistigouig Malasit Megamac, whose ancestors, along with Pasmaquadi, Pasco de Mata Gadi tribes, nation-signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. The first inhabitants of the area, now known as Kispamssis, were members of the Wallistigouig Malasit tribe, called in French as the Etchement. The name Kispamssis was derived from the Wallistigouig Malasit tribe word "Guispamssis", meaning "a little lake", in reference to today's Ritchie Lake. One of the town's main borders, the Canapicasus River, derives its name from the Megamac word "Canabagotic", meaning "little long bay place". We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. Thank you very much, merci beaucoup, and in my language, wou le vou.
And if, if we could just... Deputy Mayor Schreier. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you. That will be our beginning of each session as we move forward. Thank you. And is there a motion on the table for that? Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, your worship. I would move that council thank the Honorable Grayden Nicholas for attending council and participating in the town of Kispamssis Treaty Acknowledgement Ceremony, and further, council authorized the incorporation of a treaty acknowledgement in council's moment of reflection to be read at the beginning of each regular council meeting going forward.
Motion has been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Before you leave, I'd like to leave you with one little parting gift. See, we are in plastic up here, so, well protected. All right. Okay, I'm looking now at disclosure of interests, seeing that there are none, and presentations. Now, this evening, we have some former council members with us, and for their years of service as municipal councillors to the town of Kispamssis, and on behalf of my council colleagues and staff, and on behalf of residents for the time that you have devoted, Lisa Lockery, twenty years, Pierre Rio, seventeen years, and Sean, five years, you've got a bonus year. Five B is municipal planning orientation on municipal plan and zoning. Mr. Colburn.
Okay. Technical difficulties. Technology is great when it works. Good evening, your worship. Deputy Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to, um, trying to get rid of the protocols, I don't know if I can take my mask off or not, or leave it on, um, for the opportunity to do an overview and orientation of land use bylaw, specifically looking and focusing on the zoning bylaw and the municipal plan. So, a couple of things we'll be focusing on is we'll be going through, just very quickly, some of those, a general discussion on, obviously, the planning, department, planning staff, kind of what we do, and then looking into sort of the context, or the legislative context of zoning bylaws, municipal plans, and then we'll get into the actual process if we look at amendments to those documents as well.
Your worship, just a point of privilege. Is the, is the person at the lectern presenting not permitted to remove the mask once they're there? Is that not allowed?
I believe it's my understanding that when there's public, we all must wear masks. Right now, it's in our biggest direction.
Thank you, Counselor Beere, thank you, town clerk. It is a challenge, thank you.
In terms of the planning department, the planning department, if you were to look at it in terms of an org chart, the planning department is underneath the engineering and public works with, uh, with Mr. Lozier, Gary Lozier, he's also the Assistant Development Officer, and then myself, I'm the Planning Development Officer, so, in accordance with the Community Planning Act, appointing, appointed to look after land use activities in terms of bylaws and approving developments and so forth within the municipality. To my staff, we have Jennifer Jarvis, Jennifer Jarvis is planning technology, she just joined us in January, coming from McCallawatt, been a great addition to the, to the planning department, to at least take some things off my plate, but as we all know, I've been in Kispam, working in Kispam for eighteen years, and when you take one thing off your plate, twenty things get added, so. And then we have Chrissy Scott, Chrissy's our GIS technologist, so she's very much involved in the mapping side of things, so, in terms of, if you go on our website, which we'll see a little bit later, we have a very robust GIS system, geographic information system, that takes all the spatial data that we have and puts it together into one system that allows us to make, help guide us in terms of making decisions when it comes to planning. And then, sort of in between, I guess, when you look at the offside, Violet Brown is the PEC Secretary, she's also the admin for engineering, planning, and building inspection. So, in terms of, in terms of her role in planning, she's the Planning Advisory Committee Secretary, so applications to the PAC obviously filter through her. Next slide. What's our goal? Ultimately, our goal in terms of planning and planning documents is to at least make things, offer clear guidance as much as we can, at least to some degree, a little more clear than some of these signs. At least we try to get everybody on the, on the page, but it always comes down to what sign you see in your perspective in this particular case. So, but there's always that, you know, that caveat, good luck. Next slide. What do we do? And about a year ago, we went through an exercise of our departments had to outline what our roles and responsibilities and tasks were. As you can see on, on the slide, I had the privilege using sticky notes to actually put down all the tasks and categorize them. So, what do we do? We do everything from, obviously, long-term planning, short-term planning, administration of land use bylaws, we get in subdivision approvals, any developments in the town, go through the planning department, we get into rezonings, we get into land acquisition, we get into GIS management or data management, and on and on. Next slide. So, legislative context, the focus is talking about, obviously, the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw, two very important documents in terms of land use bylaws within the community. So, legislative context of the province, through the Local Governance Act and the Community Planning Act, grant to the, to the municipality the right to adopt and enact bylaws. So, the Local Governance Act, formerly the Municipalities Act, became the Local Governance Act in 2017, and it became the Local Governance Act to be more reflective of the actual various entities that actually provide governance within, in the province. So, you have local districts, you have regional municipalities, and you also have municipal, in terms of towns and villages and cities, so it was broadened. Basically, a two-hundred-page, two-hundred-and-ten-page document with thirty-one associated regulations. So, it sets out the powers, responsibilities, and general operations of various government entities in the province, so provide you with the ability to, obviously, enact and create bylaws. Next slide. So, in the Local Governance Act, it outlines what is the, basically, what's your municipal purpose? So, Section Five says that purpose of local government is to provide good government, to provide services, facilities, or things the council considers necessary or desirable for all or part of the local government, to develop and maintain safe and viable communities, and to foster economic, social, environmental well-being in the community. That's basically your purpose in terms of, in terms of municipal purpose, and that is what we look at in terms of when we bring in bylaws to govern and provide services within the community. Next slide. Powers of local government, one of the items, I threw this slide in there for one particular reason, one of the key items in here is that when you look at subject to the act, it keeps referring to the privileges of a natural person. So, in terms of a council, your privileges and the way you operate and the decisions you make, in terms of bylaws, you still keep it in that reflective of being a natural person, in that what you put in bylaws and what you require would be, what is reasonably considered in terms of responsibilities or accountability, and what, what a reasonable person would interpret. Next. So, the authority to make bylaws in the local governance comes from Section, Section Ten, and in that list, it actually outlines the various bylaws that you can enact. So, for example, you get into, uh, you get into bylaws that govern the health and safety and well-being of people and property, you get into things like nuisance bylaws, you get into dangerous, unsightly premises bylaws, utilities and facilities, or sewage utility bylaws, and our water utility bylaws, all those things come through the Local Governance Act. And then, obviously, the ability to enforce them also comes through the Local Governance Act. Next slide. When you look at the Local Governance Act, there's, there's a couple of, um, bylaws that actually, that they, you say you shall, um, bring forward, or you should enact, it's kind of interesting in that what they look at is procedures of council is required, establishing codes of conduct for councils required, and also provisions in terms of requirements for dogs to be vaccinated, and prescribing the requirements for proof of vaccination. So, those are actually the ones that in the local governance acts is "shall". And then, ten-three says the municipality shall actually include bylaws with respect to providing police services. The list that was prior is May, this is the list that says "shall", which is rather interesting in the discussion and the topic for another day. Next slide. Local governance, or the Community Planning Act, so this is the primary focus in terms of the planning, planning department, and this is where we get our ability to be able to enact the municipal plan and the zoning bylaws and subdivision bylaws. So, the purpose of the, the act is to enable the province, local government, regional service commissions, and specific individuals or other entities to create very specific planning documents. Developments comply with the regulations and bylaws, permits, and approvals through that process. So, if you were to go to Community Planning Act, it outlines the various community planning documents or bylaws that you can act, and, and just very quickly on the screen, I highlighted some of them in terms of zoning bylaws, flood risk bylaws, subdivision bylaws, incentive bylaws, development charge bylaws. So, in terms of bylaws and what we can act, this is our legal, our legislative context. The municipal plan, so, the municipal plan document is the key document in terms of, look, when we look at, at planning, and in terms of council. This document is a requirement under the Community Planning, or the Community Planning Act, that you have this document to set the policies and objectives and goals for what council want to fulfill or bring forward through the additional, the additional bylaws. It's a document that, that involves engaging the community to get a sense of, of the desires and what, what is needed, or what, what the community desires to have in terms of planning, and then, obviously, it comes to council for approval, and it ultimately goes to the province for adoption in terms of being registered and becomes enacted. So, the municipal plan, purpose of the plan is to set out long-term policies and proposals to guide future land use and overall development within the municipality. It's intended to be used by council, staff, and residents to guide day-to-day decisions affecting development. Plan duration is usually ten years, so in January of 2018, we adopted a new plan, which is, is taking us in terms of a ten-year period, with an interim review at five years. That doesn't mean that the bylaw, the plan cannot be amended within that timeframe, but that is sort of the, the goal, that is sort of the, the plan duration in terms of the policies that are set in it. Will be used to guide major policy decisions with respect to capital expenditures such as street upgrades, water sewer expansions, community and recreation projects, and expenditures reflecting the needs of the community going forward. Next slide. So, in terms of a hierarchy of bylaws, when you look at it from, from our perspective, we have a municipal plan, and then underneath the municipal plan, how you actually implement those policies and decisions that guide, or the policies and objectives in terms of planning, we have a zoning bylaw, and then we get into very specific bylaws, you can have what we refer to, in this case, an example, is the development scheme bylaw, which focuses on how a particular area of the town should, should be developed, so it can bring in different regulations, a little more refined, if you will. And then we have another bylaw through the Community Planning Act that helps implement the policies and proposals of the municipal plan, is a subdivision bylaw. So, one of the primary focuses of the plan, if you just want to jump back, is if it's not in the plan, cannot be implemented, okay? So, it's important that that plan have as much as we can include in it, because if you want to bring something forward and it is not recognized as being a policy or proposal of council, then it becomes very difficult to either enact it or actually take a position on it in terms of not prohibiting it, okay? So, it's very important. So, what a relationship, so the relationship in terms of how the municipal plan, you know, works with the other bylaws. The zoning bylaw is the, is the bylaw that actually is a sort of a tool that allows us to implement and bring forward the, the policies within the plan. So, provides the principles that we use in terms of the subdivision bylaw, so how streets are designed, the public infrastructure services that we, we, we provide, land for public purposes, so how do we choose land for public purposes, how do we use it? All of that is part of the municipal plan, as well as the implementation tool of a subdivision and zoning bylaws. Development schemes are very special tools, so they provide an area where you can have unique or special, special characters. So, for example, in our case, if we were to look at Millennium Drive, Millennium Drive has a development scheme bylaw that what it looks at is, is the buildings are to have certain facades, so you have to have so much brick, or your parking has to be either to the side or to the rear, you can get into different landscapes, so you have to have a certain type of trees or a certain number of trees per, per area of land being developed. And you can also get into things like stormwater management, you could get into certain areas that have to have what we call rain gardens or bioswales, so you can actually refine your development in a particular area or multiple areas throughout the town to reflect a different character, depending on, on what the goal is of council and that particular area of town. Next slide. So, the zoning bylaw is the bylaw that classifies or breaks the town in terms of zones, so if you were to open up the bylaw, you would get into things like single and family residential, you get into multi-residential, commercial, highway, commercial, so it's those, those zones that, that we get into then, what actual activities or uses can be within those zones. So, each land use category are broken into permitted uses, which are main and secondary uses, and then discretionary uses. Discretionary uses are uses that you have to go to the Planning Advisory Committee, and Planning Advisory Committee will grant approval, subject to terms and conditions, or they may deny your request for that particular use, depending on the context of the, of the proposal, if it doesn't meet the criteria of the bylaw. Next. So, the zoning map, we have a zoning map, and part of the zoning bylaw is a zoning map that actually is a graphical representation of the areas of town that are reflective of, of the, of the bylaw. So, on the screen and in your, in your slide deck, you'll notice, and unfortunately, supposed to make a little demo, but this is a reflection of our GIS. So, on our town website, if you ever go to our town website, Town Maps, there's a category or there's a, a catalog of various maps that are available, and one of those is a zoning map. If you go to the zoning map, you can click on any parcel or any area, and it can tell you what the zone is for that particular parcel. Where we're going with this is eventually be able to go to that particular area, and it'll tell you the permitted uses, and it'll tell you what your discretionary uses are, and it'll give you more information. So, that's an interactive product, you can go in and you can search, so you can type in an address, and it'll actually tell you more of the zoning information for particular parcels. This became a very useful tool for real estate agents. We used to get a lot of calls by providing this service on our website, a lot of people go to there to get that level of information. Next. In addition to breaking the, the town down into specific zones and permitted uses, it also provides what we call regulations, or just general provisions on what you can do in, in, within the municipality. So, if you go to the general provisions section, you're getting into actually how many buildings you can have on a particular lot, what about accessory dwelling units, so if you can have an apartment, what are the requirements for that, home occupations, daycare facilities, in-law suites, so it's a general provisions that outline the uses and how, what are the regulations around them. For example, in certain zones, depending on the zone, you're going to have different setbacks, so how far a building needs to be back from the property line, height of the buildings, how much of the lot can you actually develop, right? In terms of structures with respect to, than actual green space. So, it provides specific directions for So it provides specific directions for land use and conditions regarding protection of adjacent properties, and that's the focus. By providing these regulations, you are also setting conditions on how the land can be used, but as respective of, uh, the adjacent property owners as well. Next slide. Planning Advisory Committee, so the Planning Advisory Committee, uh, is a sort of head-up committee of, of council. What their focus is, is, is looking at granting variances, which we're going to get into a little variance in a second. But they look at things like discretionary uses, as I mentioned. So this committee, you, you make an application to, and if you require variances from the zoning bylaw or, or you're looking at discretionary uses, then the Planning Advisory Committee hears the application and renders a decision. So the power is given to the Planning Advisory Committee direct, directly through the Community Planning Act. Um, and it's also derived through bylaws. So the zoning bylaw, as well as the municipal plan, outlines what their authority is and what they can render decisions on. So PAC's role is primarily to advise council with respect to planning matters. Um, so it's to administer, administer specific bylaws with respect to, um, since council's duty is focused on planning. So as I mentioned, the Planning Advisory Committee can grant variances. So every time, uh, somebody comes to the Planning Advisory Committee, what they're actually doing is they're actually amending the zoning bylaw. Okay, because the zoning bylaw sets for certain regulations, if you can't meet those regulations, you're actually requesting to make a zoning bylaw amendment for your particular property. So the land use, uh, legislation in the province or in the country allows PAC committees to exist for the fact that if council, if every time a property owner made an application or couldn't meet a certain regulation or requirement, they would have to come to council. So we would be amending the zoning bylaw and the municipal plans constantly, and that's what council would actually, to some degree, could get bogged down in. So Planning Advisory Committee actually is, is the committee that looks at those minor variances based on the authority that's granted to them through the Community Planning Act and the zoning bylaw. So they also get into, uh, providing council when we get into rezonings and changing larger amendments to the plan. It's PAC's role to actually advise council on their, their position and make recommendations on those matters. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw can be amended. So there are actually, in terms of amendments, there are major amendments and minor amendments. Um, if you want to look at a minor amendment, it's what I refer to as a minor variance, and that's the focus of the Planning Advisory Committee. So things like building setbacks, if your house requires to be three meters from a property line and you can only put it at two, then you go to Planning Advisory Committee and they will consider your request and grant you a variance, subject to terms and conditions. A major variance is when you actually get into changing land use or you're changing the zone of a property. So that's, um, an amendment that would be heard by council and a decision of council based on the recommendations of the Planning Advisory Committee as well as public engagement. So PAC has the authority to grant minor variances, council has the authority to amend bylaws considering PAC recommendations and the view through the public process. Next slide. So the Community Planning Act establishes amendments to the municipal plan bylaw and the zoning bylaw. They require an open and transparent public process. Public process is applied both to minor and major amendments, and it's a critical and vital component of the amendment process. So even if you go for a minor variance through the Planning Advisory Committee, there'd notice set out to property owners who've become aware of the request and have the opportunity to respond with their concerns or their support, or have an opportunity to appear before PAC and make that, um, make, state their, state their concerns. That is the same in terms of council. So in terms of when we get into zoning bylaw amendments, municipal plan amendments, there's a public process that is involved. Because these documents, municipal plan and zoning bylaw, in, include engagement of the public to create them, then the public has to have an opportunity to express their concerns or support, in some case, changes to those documents. One of the key items is that, is to be open and transparent. So when we go through these, when you go through these processes, it's important that, that you come to the process considering the proposal, the information that's provided, and then all the feedback from the various stakeholders. Next slide. So when considering a variance, the Community Planning Act and the zoning bylaw establishes that PAC should examine the following. So I'm going to just briefly talk about in terms of PAC, what the Community Planning Act and the zoning bylaw asks that you consider when you're, what, what should guide you when you're considering an amendment or a variance. So the questions are, is it a reasonable variance? Is it desirable? Is it keeping in accordance with the, um, with the purpose of the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw? These questions are also applicable to, in terms of council, when they look at major amendments. So the, the three guiding principles or three things that from a planning perspective, we always referred, we always ask PAC to look at, uh, to consider is, is it a reasonable variance? Is it a reasonable amendment? Is it desirable in terms of, is it desirable for the community? Is it desirable for that particular area? Is it keeping with the accordance, in accordance with the intent of what the plan is, is establishing? Council has established additional criteria in municipal plan bylaw and zoning bylaw. Next slide. So in, in the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw, for example, um, council has established that if somebody, if a, if a developer comes to the town and requests to rezone a single-family residential property to multi-residential property for the purpose of, of establishing, or creating an apartment building, the municipal plan establishes five criteria. Those five criteria look at is it adjacent to a local collector's street or an arterial? Um, does it require significant number of variances? So can the lot actually support it? Uh, what are the impacts in terms of parking, in terms of building heights? Will the development actually exceed the, the, the cap, capacity of existing municipal services? So is it going to overload a sewer system, stormwater system? Uh, can the water system actually support the level of development? Um, if it's not on a water system, then we have to go through a comprehensive or a water source and assessment. You actually have to engage professionals to conduct a study to determine if there's sufficient water to support the level of development. And then we look at the criteria of landscape buffers around the property. So how do you, again, we go back to protecting adjacent properties? How do you ensure that there's adequate buffering to, uh, offset or mitigate any concerns that that change in use might have? Another example of additional criteria that's, that council has established in the municipal plan and zoning bylaw, for example, is section six of the zoning bylaw says that it is our council to protect groundwater capacity. So it lists certain uses whereby the developer or the applicant has to demonstrate there's sufficient water to support the level of development. So that is a criteria that's in the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw, that when amendments come to council, these are the criteria by which council and staff will examine and make recommendations or base their decision on. Excellent. So in terms of a zoning bylaw amendment process, sort of a flow chart to just very simplified and, and to guide you in terms of how this comes together. So if there's a request to, for example, a zoning bylaw amendment, if there's a request to change a property from single-family to multi-residential or from, uh, single-family to central commercial or commercial development, council receives the application. So normally that comes through staff, staff reviews it, staff works with the developers to get the necessary information, at least to start the process, to make sure the plans are in place, site plans, background information. Then it comes, this presented to council. If council makes the decision to move forward with that particular request, then there's a, then it's referred to the Planning Advisory Committee because they have a role to review and make recommendations to P, to council, and as well as there's a public hearing that's established. So the public hearing is that process whereby the, the application and the details of the application are made available to the public. The public have an opportunity to review it and submit their concerns, comments, in some cases, they support it. That, that time period in terms of when it's available to the public is not less than 21 days, not more than 30. And, um, those views come to the town in terms of what their comments are. They also have the, uh, ability or the right to come and present those to council as well. So the public process is that, it's a public process, so it's an open forum whereby all the, the, the comments and the feedback from the applicant, from PAC and the public are presented to council. And then council would obviously take that information. You can take it and you look at it against the criteria that you've established in the zoning bylaw and the municipal plan, and then you make, render a decision. So that the decision is open and transparent, and it's basically a decision of yes, we support it, or we will amend the bylaw. No, we, we do not for a particular reason. If it's approved or enacted, then that development, um, the zoning bylaw is amended and the development becomes subject to a development agreement. So the development agreement establishes the terms and conditions that council desire to have, uh, associated with that particular development as well as those as the PAC. It's a binding contract that is to be upheld by both the developer and then obviously by council. If it's a no, then there's, there's a couple of options that may, um, come to be, one is that the developer can wait a year, they can come back. Usually that coming back means there's at least some changes to the actual development and they wish to go through the process again. If they do not, uh, wish to proceed down that, that road, there's always the option of some sort of judicial review whereby they felt that there may have been some hardship or there may have been some, um, something that, that should have, uh, made the decision otherwise. In terms of the decision process, um, not more than two readings of the bylaw amendment. So a zoning bylaw amendment or a municipal plan amendment requires three readings of council. So normally the process is first and second reading at one meeting, and then the final reading at a subsequent meeting. That's the order that we usually see them happen, but in terms of, in terms of the order, it can be one reading at one meeting and then second and third can actually happen at a subsequent meeting. Between those readings, council can ask for clarification. So if there's something that, that in terms of a question or they want some additional information, then that ability is there to request that between the readings. Final slide. Very similar in terms of the process, there's, in terms of a municipal plan amendment, municipal plan amendment basically has one additional step, and that's at the beginning. So we go from receiving a proposal or an application to amend the municipal plan. And in this particular case, we have, you have to do what's called a public presentation. So you receive the application, there's a public presentation, the public have an opportunity to review the application. Again, additional time of 21 days, not more than 30, before you move to that public hearing process. Where these amendments happen is where there's an actual policy amendment to the municipal plan. So maybe you want to introduce, uh, a different policy, okay? Or it's in a case where if a, if a property right now is zoned residential and in the municipal plan, it's continued in the future to be identified as being rented residential, but somebody comes in and says, I want to make it commercial, because the future land use of that particular property is residential, you have to amend the plan. So you can go from residential to multi-residential through a zoning bylaw amendment because the actual future use of that land is still considered residential. But if you go from residential to commercial or institutional or some other, uh, zone, then you actually have to amend the plan. Okay, so as staff, those are directions and, and sort of guidance that we would present council through that process to identify, here's the steps that we have to go through to consider as part of this application. Excellent. So an example, just very quickly, just right in the neighborhood, uh, 224 Hampton Road, so it's just across the street here. That was at one time a single-family residential building, that was R1, okay, and the zoning. And it went through a municipal plan amendment process to change it to central commercial, where now we have a professional, um, building. So that's sort of an example, very close, of, of where land, the growth of the community, things change. And then obviously the land use change and the process that has to be undertaken. So in summary, Local Governance Act and Community Planning Act grants the authority to council to enact bylaws in terms of land use, development, how they're, and how they're, uh, the guiding and decision-making process. Council establishes the content of those bylaws in keeping with the provisions of the act, either directly or through delegation. So what the, the content of those bylaws is the desires of council as well as the community and how we enforce them moving forward. These bylaws can be amended to reflect obviously the changes in the growth of the community, changes in policy, and any other reasonable or desired purpose through an open and transparent public process. Next slide. Questions? Before we get to the questions. An extra slide that I added that wasn't in the slide deck, but I suggested read was one of the slides. There's a book called Grassroots Democracy, Local Governance in the Maritime, so it's from, it's from Dalhousie. It's a, an older book, I think 1998. If you have a chance to read it, it's a very, should I say, good read, maybe? Good Friday night read, as my professor used to say. But it's, it's written in a way where you don't have to read the entire book. So it's broken down into chapters, each chapter covers different aspects of local governance in terms of, in terms of the finance, in terms of what your roles and responsibilities are, and so it's a good, it's a good read in terms of getting a background of how that, um, works together. So it looks at Maritime Province, it's Nova Scotia P E I, it runs with, it looks at the difference, looks at the similarities, looks at why the province covers certain aspects in terms of like healthcare and those types of things, and why the province or the municipalities cover other. So in summary, it's, as, as we hear many times, municipalities creature of the province. Now I'm open to questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Colburn, it's very informative. Uh, just, I'll, I'll hand the chair over to Deputy Mayor Schreier just for a moment. Uh, my question would be, how often would we review and rewrite some of our codes so that we keep up with the changing times? Uh, just a question that, uh, if you can answer that?
Yeah, so in terms of the municipal plan document, as I mentioned, there's a, you know, it's, the duration is 10 years with, uh, an interim review at five to look at. You know, in terms of the plan, um, here's the policies that council set out, here's what we've achieved, here's what's remaining. You know, here's what's worked so far, here's what hasn't worked. So that's based on the trends, it's based on, uh, the, the developments that we've received and we've gone through. In terms of the zoning bylaw, um, the zoning bylaw is something that we can, we can, um, change, you know, from time to time. Uh, there's no set period in terms of having to review. Um, you're required to adopt the municipal zoning bylaw, minimum of two years subsequent to municipal plan. So, um, we right now are going through our zoning bylaw, uh, looking at the changes that are happening in terms of the trends, in terms of what we need to implement into, into the community and to reflect obviously the policies of the municipal plan. So, um, what the main zoning bylaws, the main amendments that happen to the zoning bylaw are usually that zoning changes.
Thank you, and I'll return to the chair. Next in line, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I'm glad it's on, we can save it, so I'll be going back to look at it. I have two questions, and the one is, um, is there another way besides mail to contact residents that are in the vicinity of a, a variance where a variance is going to happen? Uh, within, I ask that question because I know myself, sometimes I don't pick up the mail and then I get it and I go, oh, I guess they were doing a variance around here. So that was one question, and I'm not sure, I, the other question was, um, when is the municipal plan due? It, it, what is the date, is it close?
So your first question, so the, the Community Planning Act establishes how, how notifications are given. Um, so the options are you, you can put it in local paper, okay, so it's in the local paper. Residents within 100 meters of the subject property get direct notice through the mail. Um, or you can actually post a notice. Um, or you can actually post a notice on the property. So you could physically take a, a, a note or a, a letter physically posted on the property to say that this property is. Currently subject to a zoning bylaw review, um, or, um, a request to amend. We also now, with the change in the Community Planning Act, you can use social media, so you can also put it on the town website. Or you can go through social media avenues to, uh, identify to the general public that, um, this amendment or this request is before council. The challenge with email is, um. We do collect emails for other purposes, so if you're on a utility account, you, you, if you want to get a, uh, an email of your bill. However, when you provide that information, it's provided for that specific purpose. So in order to collect that information and use it for something else, you would have to get the consent of the, of the person who's giving you that email to do so. So, um, the same proceed, the same procedure is applied to both PAC and council. So when we receive applications for PAC, there's direct notice given to people within a hundred meters, based on what that application is about. In some cases is fifty, that's been established through the PAC policy, which has been established through planning appeal decisions. Second question, uh, twenty eighteen, so in twenty twenty-three, we'll be doing the five-year review in terms of what's, uh, in the plan. And twenty twenty-eight is. That's math. Um, that's when we'll be doing, uh, a full review.
Did you say five-year review?
Mm-hmm. So there's an interim review in twenty twenty-three, and then the actual full plan review would be in twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship, and, uh, thank you for a great, uh, uh, report. As a new guy, this is really helpful for someone like me, and so I really appreciate all the work you went to to put this together. Um, back on slide twenty-seven, you've, uh, the guiding criteria slide. Um, if you, uh, pulled out a section, uh, section six of the zoning bylaw about the protection of groundwater capacity. And the need to test for water and ensure if there's a variance that's being applied, that it's, you know, how that's going to impact, uh. Aquifers and low-yield wells and so on. Uh, it's just a curiosity question, does that apply as well? Is the planning department like consulted at all in terms of like if there's a special event that's going to draw a large crowd? Over a period of a day or two, I'm thinking in terms of, take something, I'm just imagining something like a music festival or something like that, that's going to somehow. Create a larger-than-usual draw on water in a concentrated area. Have, has, have you ever been consulted on something like that for, you know, where you're not talking about a business that's set up eternally or in perpetuity or whatever?
So, so Your Worship, um, speci- special events, no, I have not, however, there are guiding principles. Guidance that say when, what level of study you have to do. So for example, if you're looking at subdivision developments, once you hit between, um. Anywhere from ten to, to twenty-four lots, then you're getting into abbreviated study. So you don't actually drill the wells on the ground. Anything above, above that, so when you get, uh, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five and more. Then you're actually getting into studies where you're drilling wells and you're studying drawdown, drawdown times and, and yields. So it's, it's, and what the other thing that, that governs that is if you draw more than fifty cubic meters a day, which is about thirteen thousand gallons. Then you actually get into, uh, further study, so you get into things like environmental impact assessments. And all that's governed by the Provost's Clean Water Act, which outlines when and how you're supposed to do the study. Um, and that information is collected and provided.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Colburn? There is a motion. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, Your Worship. I would like to thank Mr. Colburn for his, uh, presentation, uh, the orientation presentation. To council on municipal planning.
It's been moved by Counselor Thompson. Seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven-zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Colburn, very informative. Five C, Mr. Zach Richard in attendance. Mr. Richard, welcome to the podium. Thank you for coming here this evening.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Hi, good evening, council. My name's Zach Richard, I'm here this evening to talk a little bit about the recent changes with the K V comics schedule and the newly developed. Um, you know, the merge of the two bus routes together and all. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the town for allowing me to be here this evening to discuss this issue. It's, uh, something that affects me personally every day, but it also affects a lot of other people here in the community as well. Before the schedule change, I would get up every day from the Quispam sis road and bike down to one of the many bus stops and take the seven o'clock bus. Which, well, it arrived uptown at seven o'clock and, um, I would be able to take the bus uptown where. I would cajole with many other people on the bus and. Now with the new changes, I must cycle over an hour to work every day. And it's very tiring, very draining on the body and. This new change came into effect on July the fifth, only eighteen days after it was announced by the, the town and the town of Rossay. The sudden change was a bit of a shock to the people that rely on the service daily and. We kind of didn't know what to do when everything was changing all at once. With the old schedule, the first bus arrived uptown at seven oh five, gave regular commuters, most of which start work around seven thirty to eight A M. Gave them time to catch a connection bus uptown, or even just to go and grab a coffee before they wanted to start their day. Now with the new changes, the first bus doesn't arrive uptown until seven forty, which is followed by the second bus at eight fifty A M. And there are no more routes until after four in the afternoon. The issues commuter, excuse me, the issues commuters are having with the new system is not the merge of the two routes, it's. The new schedules and how they merge with the other routes in Saint John. Um, these new times aren't convenient for anybody who really works in Milledgeville, east-west. And, or even uptown, because most of the larger connection buses such as the one A and the one B. Um, the three A, the three B, which want, uh, which run from east to west to east to the regional uptown with stops all over the north end. And throughout the city. Um. So with the first comics route not arriving till seven forty, it makes it very difficult for people to try and catch a connection bus to get anywhere else in the city. Um, I really think an increased comic service would be better cer, be better suited for the community and would attract riders from all different age groups. Such as students going to and from universities, seniors traveling to and from the stores uptown. Um, teens just wanting to go to the mall, or even adults who just work later in the day. I know a lot of people personally who start work at noon and work the twelve to nine shifts and. They're forced to take taxis which cost upwards of thirty dollars a day to get to and from work. Um. Yes, just with, with the new, with the way the schedules that they, they are now, it, it makes it inconvenient for anybody who wants to go. In to town because, uh, during the day hours, because during the morning it gets, the last run arrives uptown at nine A M and then. The commuters would have to wait until after four P M in the afternoon to return home. And it forces a lot of people to try and find alternate means of transportation, which I find increases gas emissions. And lowers rider numbers even more on the comics. Move S J is a newly developed vision that would focus on a balanced transportation system. That would use existing street and highway networks to provide an active way to use shared modes of transportation, such as cycling and walking. To help commuters get to their destinations in a more efficient and eco-friendly manner. The Transit Commission could even look into using smaller buses or electric buses during the slower hours, which would cut down on fuel costs and gas emissions. That would also coincide with Saint John's municipal plan that aims towards implementing growth in the progressive environmental policies. And creating greater solutions for commuting to the city of Saint John. Excuse me. I really feel that the comics doesn't live up to its potential, because it just needs a couple of little tweaks that would make its two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar budget. Uh, it would make use of its two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar budget to better service the public. It would also reduce gas emissions and make it a viable m- means of transportation for anyone in the, in the Kenvegas Valley. To conclude, I would like to personally thank Counselor Kirk Miller and Deputy Mayor Schreier. As well as the rest of the town council for their continued support with this issue, and I hope somehow as a community, we can save the comics. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richard, um. Counselor Miller, did you have anything that you'd like to add to that? I, your lightest flashings.
Thank you, Your Worship, uh, thank you, Mr. Richard, for being here today. Um, I'm just gonna, just do a couple of comments on a few things, because four of the seven people weren't, weren't around when we talked about comics earlier. Um, unfortunately, it came out to the riders that this was a sudden change. Quispam sis had actually asked Saint John Transit in February to make the change, and we were trying to give ample time so that it would be set out in, we were hoping March or April. And then it would then come out in July. Um, I don't, I don't know what happened in between there, but, but that was the original intent. Um, also, unlike, uh, what we were trying to do as a community is comics, we've been tracking for a while. Um. This is my folder on comics, so I have routes that go back all the way to twenty twelve to twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen. We started doing daily counts on the buses. We tried to change the routes to make them as efficient as possible. At one point, we were having almost six runs a day. In, but then we started looking at it, in some points, we're having three people on the bus. So we started trying different avenues. At one point, we started off just with bus fifty-two, which was a shared bus. And then we merged to, we tried to add another bus to try to be, um, you know, more environmentally friendly, and we had a Quispam only. Um, and ridership had continued to decline, we continued to, to change things until, until twenty seventeen, we started to see it. Flatten off and we were starting to change a little bit. So after that, um, the pandemic hit. Um, so when the pandemic hit, we did, had, did no changes, so we kept the three runs every morning. Four, I think four in the afternoon was on fifty-three, and to do that, we actually had to add an extra bus. Because the bus, when it goes in and out from town, takes seventy, seventy minutes. So we're actually paying to have a different bus to go in as well, so it's just not the cost of the gas, it's, it's the drivers, the maintenance, so it's so much per hour. And the last data I have, and unfortunately with COVID, it wouldn't be reliable, the last data before COVID, the bus that you're currently, were going on before. And again, I'm just saying what the last data was that we have, was five to six people a day taking that one bus. So when we seen some of the other places cancel comics and, and there was, there was also, during the time we had, we had in our budget, we had some debate here. And there, there was some appetite and so, and, and there was a vote to cancel it as well. Um, they didn't go through, uh, through, six to one, it, it passed to keep it. With COVID, we're not sure what's going to happen, so, um, and the acting CEO may be able to help here, but. What we did, we had three routes in the morning and three in the afternoon. What we did is, because we also now have to do things in conjunction with Rossay. We were able to add on a couple of stops in Quispam that we didn't have before, and then we looked at the best routes that were, were happening, so at that time, those three routes. The two after yours were the top routes. But what they did is they took those top routes, but they also moved them back. I don't know the exact amount of time, but fifteen or twenty minutes, because originally they were getting there after eight and after nine, those last two routes, so now they had them coming in before nine. And before eight. It's, it didn't help with, with your situation, so that was the predominant routes and, and so that's how we kind of. Got to where we are, but it's always evolving, we don't know what the pandemic is. And my question will be outwards is, um, we have to do what's best, so right now with the two routes, it's seventy minutes. So either start earlier or later, and, and but what we need to know is, why do people take the bus and what times are best? So I don't know if there's a way of, of having a, uh, I just, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? A poll, like on the bus itself, or, or everybody, yeah, or that everybody that actually has a bus pass that buys them now. Uh, I would think Saint John Transit would have, or maybe they don't, but their email, so if you're not buying it anymore, why aren't you buying it? What are the best times? Um, we work in conjunction with Saint John Transit, or the city of Saint John, and, uh, and, uh, and Rossay. So we're always looking at, to make it best for everybody. But the challenge, and, and you were saying, you know, let's have a bus at a different time, is unfortunately it's not that easy, so right now, if we can just get the, the two in the morning the best. And the two in the afternoon the best, because we were developed here to be kind of a commuter service to try to get into the city. Um, because, you know, we've had people request to go to the hospital directly and things like that, but everybody works different times and we don't know what COVID is going to do, so. It's something mindful, I mean, we have to, you know, I appreciate all your comments, think they're great, I think we, somehow we need to have a. Find out exactly the people that aren't taking it, why they're not taking it now, and the people that are taking it, is this the right time? Uh, or not, because the way I look at it now from a budgetary, we, we haven't seen what our new budget's going to be for next year. But the last time we ran the numbers, uh, and again, as scientific as it's going to get, is we looked at everybody that got on in a Quispam sis stop. And assumed they were from Quispam. And we did that for, for many weeks, and then we said, okay, we, we know some people are on holidays different weeks, so then we grossed up the number. And at that time, when we looked at what Quispam sis was subsidizing each, each rider, it was nineteen hundred and fifty-three dollars. So for each rider, so it also gets into, we, we have a hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget, we used to be one ninety-five. We're now at one seventy, just for Quispam, and we got to see what's, what's happening in the future as well, so. Uh, I, I can't give you a direct answer, but I would say that the transit, we also have to go to the E, E U B, I'm looking at our. The E U B, I think they have to be involved now too with all, any bus changes, or maybe not, but, um. Is that it, usually the changes are done every quarterly, at least what we were told in the past when I used to meet with some of the Saint John Transit people that are no longer here right now, but. Um, so we'd probably look at Q four, and I'm hoping by August that. Restriction will lift yet again, and we'll start seeing what a, what a new reality is, so. Um, sorry for rambling on so long, but it's, it's just a bit of context and information, and, and I guess what we need is even more data, so. Everything's data-driven, so, and, is, why aren't people on it now? We, we did change, we did take the top two routes that were available, that, and we then moved them back. Did we move them back too much, or we moved them back far enough? Because I've heard anecdotally, some people say, well, now that bus is getting in too early for me, I don't want to be there that early, so. We, we got to find out where that is, um, and I don't know if our acting C O can help us with that or discussions with Rossay, but it's, it's a. It's something we can't change the bus routes today by ourselves, but we, we need the feedback, so. Apologize for a long-winded response.
I, I definitely agree with you when it comes to, uh, the fact that we, you know, we don't need. We definitely don't need a fifty-foot bus that only has four people on it, that's, it's foolish. Um, if we could, some, uh, uh, I'm not here to get the, the times changed today, I know that's not realistic and it's not going to happen. I'm here more just to express how. If, if the times were changed a little bit, or if we could look into, you know, provincial funding, I know that's a big stretch, because the, uh. With the federal funding that was just given out to Halifax and stuff for, you know, a hundred and twelve million for new. Um, electric busing and everything, but if, if we could look into maybe smaller buses during slower hours or. Uh, just, just options to keep open, I'm, I'm just here to voice the concerns that I, I think there's still people out there that would. Come back to the comic service, especially after the COVID restrictions are lifted. I know a lot of people are going to return back to the offices in September, October. And I think that's when it'll start to come alive again.
Thank you. Next in queue is Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Um, thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Mr., is it Richard or Richard?
It's Richard.
Richard, for coming tonight, because you are somebody who uses the bus. I, I don't personally use that service, uh, and so you bring up a lot of valid points, I mean, we have to look at the users. The biggest point that I see that you phrased is the transfer. It seems to be a question of getting into town and, you know, who knows where's, who's going, somebody's going west, somebody's going to the university, somebody's going to the hospital. You could be going anywhere from the destination of downtown, so I guess that's the question for. And, um, I don't know if I say John, just Saint John Transit, is how those transfers actually work. Because that timing is crucial, because you need an extra fifteen minutes.
Exact, exactly.
Get to the transfer, and, um, you know, I, I don't know, do they just use the same ticket to do the transfer?
With the comic service, you have to have, you can buy a comics monthly pass, which is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Which you can use on the comics or just the regular city transit buses. Or you can buy a city transit pass and then buy a punch card, which is what most people do, because the hundred and twenty-five dollars they find is a little expensive. Because most people only use the comics five days a week. And, or, oops, sorry, and sometimes four days a week or. And, or, oops, sorry, and sometimes four days a week or five days a week, and i- it's not really worth it to have it if they're not transferring to another bus. But the transferring to the other bus is the crucial part, because most people that take the COMEX either work, you know, uptown or, uh, uh, in the north end, somewhere with bad parking. And they need those connection buses. And like I said, the connection buses are right between seven fifteen and seven thirty-five. Seven thirty-five is when the, the last main run, the one A leaves uptown.
So I just wanted to thank you for coming because you bring up a lot of valid points to us and I guess, um, I would, um, be ready to move a motion.
Thank you very much.
Um, the, um, first of all, to thank Mr. Richard for his presentation to council and that we continue to monitor the impacts of the recent changes of the KV COMEX bus schedule.
Thank you very much.
On the question, we have, uh, next in queue. Oh, that was moved by Counselor, uh, by Deputy Mayor Schreier. And seconded by, I'm going next in queue, uh, Counselor Olson. Did you have something you wanted to say as well? Okay.
I know, are you, I, is, is this, is?
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Mr. Richard, for your presentation. This is quite a dilemma for council. We try to put something out there that'll provide a service in the community. Uh, I worked with Counselor Miller for many years on the committee and I've just been relieved of that duty recently, uh, and moved on to some other committees. But saying all of that, we've, uh, seen the usage go up and down. Some of it, uh, uh, definitely affected by the COVID. Uh, probably the majority of it has been affected by the COVID, but there hasn't been a, really a steady uh, usage of the, uh, of the service. Going from one bus to two, changing the routes, expanding to the Vincent Road to try and gather more people. And with a hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget, uh, every year when we go through our budget process, there's, uh, many issues that are brought up by the, by the general public, by the residents that are not anywhere near that type of budget, and we don't approve them just because we're committed. We wanna see this COMEX go. We're supportive of it. As Counselor Miller said, it was six, six to one last time in favor, uh, when we voted on it before, and I continue to support it myself. But, um, I, um, I share your optimism in, uh, uh, maybe the people coming back to it. But, uh, we, we fairly, we seem to have, a population over here was two or three cars to a family, and, uh, it's hard to break that mold. But we'll continue to work to try and address the concerns that you've brought up here this, this evening and, uh, stick with our support for COMEX, but thank you for your information.
Thank you very much. Like, and like I said, I, I really just wanted to be here to, to
Yeah.
project my voice to, to make sure the council hasn't, e- e- everybody hasn't forgotten that there still are some people that use and rely on the comics every day. And th- that's all I really wanted to get out there is that changing, I, I know things have to change, but if we could just change for the better and for the most, the majority would be ideal. And I guess we won't be able to do that until we find out how COVID's gonna impact the routes and such.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next in queue, Counselor Luck.
Thank you, your worship, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Richard. It was very informative and I appreciate you coming and, and taking your time tonight to, to, um, highlight some of your concerns. Um, as Counselor Miller had pointed out, is, you know, a lot of these decisions have to be data-driven. And as a researcher, my, I guess one of my questions, and it's not really an amendment for the motion, but the motion talks about monitoring and I question, we have a captive audience. It doesn't sound like we're talking hundreds and hundreds of people. I'm just wondering, as part of us moving forward, if the monitoring can also include a survey of current users, cause we do have a captive audience, like they're on the bus. So I, I know it's not ideal, cause perhaps some people aren't taking the bus, cause the times don't work. But if we could even kinda survey them to find out, you know, are half of them missing their connections now? Are a lot of people, you know, somehow reaching the users to really understand what the issue is and how we potentially could tweak it even slightly to make it work for the, the people that are using it. And then, again, I realize that as hopefully COVID is behind us and people are returning to work, it may have to be redone again, and the bus routes might have to be tweaked when more and more people start to return to in-person, you know, work situations. Um, but I'm just wondering if we could have more of an action on the monitoring, because I think we do need some more data to really make sure that the routes that were picked are working for the people that are trying to use them now. So anyway, thank you.
I, I, I really, I really think that's a great idea, and I, I really do think that the, the people that use the service would be more than happy to voice their opinions, but I think it's also the people that don't use the service that we need to hear from. Why aren't they using the service? What could we do to, you know, better the service? Maybe we could, as a, the town could send out a survey to all the residents and ask them, you know, have you ever considered using the service? Is there a reason why you're not using the service or such? But, uh, again, thank you very much, man, for everything.
Next in queue, Counselor Bigger.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Uh, thanks for bringing the concerns forward, and, uh, I think the deputy mayor and, uh, uh, Counselor Olson kinda said already what I was gonna say, but I just wanted to say, you know, we appreciate the, uh, the enthusiasm that you have about the, the value of the, uh, comics. And I'm new to the council, I'm new to the comics committee, but we had a meeting recently and the discussion around the issue of transfers and trying to better align that with connector, uh, folks like yourself was, uh, top of mind in that discussion. Uh, and the importance as well of, um, what Counselor Luck just pointed to, uh, maybe actually putting people on the bus to try to, uh, do a bit of a, you know, discussion, uh, I don't know which one of us is gonna get up at that time of day to do that. But to try to actually get some, you know, direct feedback from users and, uh, as you point out and others have pointed out, maybe trying to even get beyond that to people who are not using it and perhaps the bus pass, uh, is a way to do that. There's privacy regulations around use of email for certain things versus other things. But anyway, uh, just wanted to say, appreciate you, uh, bringing this forward and I just wanted you to know that, you know, I'm just new to the comics committee, but I see, uh, a legacy of people trying really, really hard to, um, make this thing work. And, uh, you know, I think that as a Quispam SIS resident, I campaigned, uh, for council, that I saw a lot of value in the comics, and I see that there are some uh, towns and communities that have opted out completely, and we're still here and we still wanna try to make it work. So, thanks a lot.
No, again, thank you very much for, for hearing what I have to say, and I really think that, uh, we need more data to, to get the COMEX up and going again, but, um, everything is, is, needs to be considered and it's, uh, we're really, I think, working towards the right direction. I just wanted to give it a bit of an extra push and try and make sure that everybody is being heard.
Thank you, and I can say that I have gotten up early in the morning, Counselor Bigger, to, uh, to give the COMEX a try.
I work on rock star hours, so.
Certainly, uh, the community expresses, uh, is something close to my heart. I, I think, uh, you know, w- we need to keep working on it, uh, as we move forward through COVID and into green. And finally, we have Counselor Donovan.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, thank you so much for your presentation. Uh, it's always insightful to hear directly from community, community members, uh, especially those who have been affected by the changes. Uh, and I'm also proud to see someone my age fighting for something really important. Uh, you're very good at proposing questions, and I'll give you that. Um, as someone who has had to use the COMEX extensively over the past two years to work uptown, I can certainly understand your concerns. Uh, I also received a letter of how it impacts another commuter, commuter as well, so you're certainly not alone. Um, while I don't have anything to offer to your presentation at the moment, I know our transit committee will take your concerns and the concerns of fellow commuters seriously, and I have full confidence that they are presenting to us, or that they are presenting us with the best possible information to make decisions regarding the interests of all our residents. Uh, I'm, I'm really hoping that, uh, in the near future, we can sort of come to a compromise, uh, that will benefit everybody. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you again very much, and, and I, I, I really do, uh, I appreciate you. You were kind of the person I was t- trying to nudge towards, just more or less, not, no offense to everybody else, but, uh, y- you know, somebody my age that just kinda u- understands a bit of what I'm, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to accomplish here. I'm, I, I, I'm not trying to, you know, make things worse for anybody. I'm, I'm trying to make things, uh, as a general, um, better for the community. And, and if, uh, the bus arriving at seven forty uptown is what ends up being better for the community, then that's great, and I'll support it a hundred percent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richard. The motion on the table was moved by Count, uh, by Deputy Mayor Schreier and, and seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Are we changing the motion for a survey? Is someone going to do the survey? Counselor Luck? Yes.
I guess it, I guess, I guess it would be, I guess it would be, it, how you can construe the word monitor. Because monitor could include surveys, you know, it sounds like the committee has a, a handle on it. We've got two strong counselors. They know what our direction is, so I don't think the motion really needs to be changed unless council would like otherwise.
Sounds good. Counselor Luck.
Your worship, I was gonna maybe suggest instead of monitor, we could say evaluate, cause evaluate would then kind of include the monitoring plus kind of a bit more action. Um, you know, cause anyway, it's, but I think it just, it has, it's a bit more of an action word than just monitoring, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, uh, please vote now. We're, we're good. Okay. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Richard.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
Item number six, public hearings. Uh, just one second. Yeah, we're just at item number six right now, so, um, so we'll, we'll call you up in just a few minutes. So we're going to seven? Yeah, okay. Uh, okay, so there's no, okay, so the minutes of the previous meeting. No vote information to dispel? There's nothing on that, Captain? I have nothing on that. Okay. Uh, Counselor Miller?
Ye- yes, your worship. Um, I was wondering since, uh, Mr. Clavoe, sorry if I pronounced your name wrong, if, if, uh, he, if, if the council would be okay if we could move nine A up and, and then go through the rest so that he doesn't have to stay here for an extra half hour? Could I move that, please?
Is that a motion, Counselor Miller? It's been moved by Counselor Miller that we move, uh, nine A forward, uh, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question, please vote now. Show of hands, please, in favor. Seven zero, motion carried. So we will move to nine A. Mr. Clavoe. Could you please state your name and address for, for council?
Clavoe, and I live at fifty-four Leah Boulevard in Quispam SIS. I got my presentation here. Is it okay if I distribute it to council? All right, uh, first and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys for he- hearing me out. Uh, also, you'll have to bear with me as English isn't my first language, so I'll try to convey my message as clearly as possible. So, uh, hello, my name is Galen Clavoe, and I live at fifty-four Leah Boulevard. Uh, after obtaining employment as a Coast Guard search and rescue first responder and research, researching the real estate market around Saint John, my wife and I decided to make our home in Quispam SIS a beautiful and growing community and a perfect place to raise our young child. I'm here today because I want to discuss the proposed roundabout that is scheduled for construction in front of my home. The project is scheduled to begin in August, and I'm somewhat at odds with the project for the following reasons. Uh, I was not officially notified of the project, even though the construction of the roundabout in front of my home will significantly impact and cause hardship for myself and my family. The roundabout will encroach on my driveway, and I find it peculiar that the town will notify me that a daycare business will open in my neighborhood, but yet will not notify me about uh, a major construction project that will drastically modify my driveway. After purchasing my home three years ago and having spoken with real estate agents and home appraisers, I have been advised that this encroachment of my driveway may negatively affect the value of my home. And I ask you, uh, town council, how would you feel if the town decided to put a roundabout that would decrease the value of your home? The reason I was given for the proposed roundabout is that speeding in the ma- that there is a speeding problem in the neighborhood. And I do believe it's a problem. I would not be here today if a roundabout was the only solution. However, there are a number of solutions with proven effectiveness to address the problem. Uh, such as shikans, which is, uh, you can see on figure one and two of your document. Or, uh, street setup such as on the Harbor Bridge where the old toll booth was, like a profiled S i- in the road. Uh, second option would be narrow curves such as the intersection of Scarlet and Gondola Boulevard. That's just a, a block from, uh, my place. Uh, speed bumps. Um, about speed bumps, I inquired why speed bumps, uh, weren't installed instead of a roundabout, uh, to the project engineer, the engineer that actually, uh, drew, uh, the drawing for the intersection, as you can see on figure three. Uh, and I was told speed bumps increase response time for first responders. However, I am a first responder and speed bumps will not increase the response time. Furthermore, I discussed the issue with the Quispam SIS police officer, and he mentioned that a narrow-type roundabout that will be installed in front of my home might actually increase response time compared to a speed bump. I also confirmed the statement with the firefighter. And as you might know, there is, uh, a lot of speed bumps in the town of Quispam. And as you might know, there is, uh, a lot of speed bumps in the town of Quispampas, there's, you can find them a few different spots there. Uh, furthermore, I've consulted with the civil engineer about roundabouts and showed him a figure three in your document. Uh, his first observation was that a roundabout is not a method to slow traffic down, but to regulate traffic. He also mentioned that several more modern techniques could easily be implemented. Another issue about the project is that logistically backing up a trailer camper and/or emergency vehicle in my driveway will be complicated. The town's engineering manager said that he would consult with me with regards to how to remedy some of the logistical problems mentioned above. However, this meeting is yet to take place. Lastly, I have inquired about whether the proposed location of the roundabout complies with town bylaws. A town employee from the, uh, planning department and engineering manager both mentioned that my driveway is not in a proper location. The roundabout project was approved five years ago and my home was constructed three years ago. I failed to understand how the town would approve the construction of a layout of my home knowing that a roundabout project would significantly, significantly affect my property. I believe someone committed an error. And that's, I'll just, quick note on that, uh, uh, that's the point that I really have a hard time understanding. When I was talking to the planning department, they told me basically my driveway should have been flipped around, so on the other side of my property. And yet it was approved by, by someone and that's, I find that troubling, to be honest. In conclusion, up until now, I haven't mentioned the most important aspect of the proposal, of the proposed roundabout, which is the safety of my young toddler and unborn child. I have concerns that an accident might happen, given the flow, given the close proximity of the roundabout to my driveway and the speeding history around the neighborhood. For all these reasons, I urged the town to, the Town Council to reconsider the proposed roundabout. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. There is a motion on the table. Could we have a motion and then we will have a discussion on that? Counselor Donovan?
Just one second here. I would motion that, uh, Councilor for the concerns expressed by Mr. Clavoe to staff for further, uh, review.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Thompson. So moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question. I will go to the Q.
Thank you, your worship, uh, thank you very much for your presentation. And, and sorry if I butchered your last name earlier. Uh, I, I guess, uh, through you, your worship, to Director of Engineering and, and maybe shed some light, uh, and I guess you'd say that one of the most perplexing things was, um, if this was approved five years ago and, and I've, and I've gone to see where your house is, so I know exactly and I've got, got the pictures of your house and where the trail is as well. That if, at that point, you would have probably flipped, uh, your house, you would have put, uh, one on the other side, your, your driveway on the other side, so, so I guess my, my question through you to the Director of Engineering, is this something that just, was, was it always planned as a roundabout or, or, I don't know if there's any comment to that one, I guess, just to, to, to.
Y- your worship, the, uh, the project, the Gondola Boulevard project was designed as a streetscape project for the full length. So from the Quispampas Road all the way down to Leah Boulevard out through to, um, uh, through that, this area. The, the, they, we identified two major intersections for, uh, traffic islands. It's really technically not a roundabout. As, as Mr. Clavoe mentioned, roundabouts are delineating right of way, uh, like we have out on the arterial. This is really a traffic island technical term for it, it's a traffic island and, and, and again, it is one measure for streetscape and for traffic calming, so it does serve that purpose. But as far as the, the design, this was the part of the Gondola Boulevard project that was approved by council four years ago, or, that we did in phases. It was approximately a million dollars each year that we tried to do this project and this is the last phase where we introduced some concrete work. Two of the other intersections that we have do have minor chicanes that Mr. Clavoe has mentioned in his diagram where we narrowed down the intersections. And, and we use those methods for control. Because this was a T-intersection, that's why we went to the island scenario. As far as the driveway locations, we have four other, uh, traffic islands in the municipality and there are driveways into or adjacent to the islands. So the placement of a driveway directly adjacent to an island is, is, is not problematic. When we look at the level of traffic that we're looking at in this particular area. And Mr. Clavoe's concern about backing of a trailer, things like that. When my engineering manager mentioned it to me, I said, you know, we have the ability during construction to meet with any resident to look at placements of driveway access, widen, curb drops, things of that nature, to try to adapt in, on site, any access issues that may arise. So I think, I think there's, there's potential here that we can, we can look at some of the concerns that Mr. Clavoe has identified from, from an access perspective. With regards to changing the island to something else, um, we would, we have a project at this moment, the, the tender is released for it. There may be some, maybe some complications involved in actually removing that from the tender, if, if this is something that council goes to that direction, but at this stage of the, it is, it is a project as identified for the summer's construction work. So, so we have the ability to work with residents on the exact location of driveways, adjust them slightly, things of that nature. As far as the, the comment about an error being committed, I think, uh, the fact that we have driveway accesses directly adjacent to other islands, I think that is one of the things that likely the building inspection review, when they did site plan review, looked at it, said, okay, this is something that can be adjusted in the field if need be. So we have to recognize that, quite frankly, the level of traffic that we're talking about in our municipality is, is low, relatively low when you look at the technical reviews of these types of, of, of traffic control devices, okay? The comments about, um, you know, the island may delay, uh, 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 first responders or speed bumps don't respond. We've had, we've had discussions with first responders that, that indicate the opposite to what Mr. Clavoe was saying. So again, it's very subjective on who you talk to, what the equipment is being used to respond to the, to the issues. So we have to look at every site specifically. So I, I think the, the, the motion to refer to staff is, is appropriate in that we could meet with Mr. Clavoe on site, look at what the issues are. We have some capacity to adjust some alignments if we need be. If, if it means that, okay, we, we cannot address some of the concerns, then we would have to come back for council with an adjustment to our current tender and say, okay, here's what we have to do to, to address it. But I think at this stage of the, the, the project, um, there is some capacity for us to look at, at, at some site configurations to, to assist with some of the concerns that have been addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. I'm going to next in queue and that would be Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, this is a question through you to, uh, the Director of Engineering. This is just a general question, it, you know, may not apply only to, uh, Mr. Clavoe's case. Um, but are there any current, uh, fallbacks in place to notify new property owners that development will be taking place, uh, around their, their, their land, uh, where they would have, where they would not have been notified as they were not the original property owners at the time that, that the town notified, uh, surrounding original residents? I hope that makes sense.
Your worship, our street capital program, when it's approved by council, will be posted on the town website. So, so at this stage of the game, because we have, for example, in this year's project, we have twelve and a half kilometers of roadway. We, we, it's, it's, it's logistically not feasible to notify every single resident of when we're doing street capital work in their area. So that's why, um, we look at the individual sites and if something does, if it arises, but we just don't have a little logistic capacity to, to notify. As I said, like for this year, we had twelve and a half kilometers of roadway, every single property owner that we're gonna be doing this. I mean, that could range everything from, we're, we're digging a ditch to replacing a driveway culvert, to adjusting a shoulders and, and theoretically, every single person could have an issue with the work that we're doing in front of their property. So we look at the public consumption on our municipal website of our, of our, our street capital, once the knowledge is there. If a specific issue arises, such as Mr. Clavoe has identified, that's when we go out on the site and we deal with that as, as, as pro- as progressively as we can. It's, 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 it's a, it's a function of us getting bigger and doing more, and bigger projects that, back in the, in the, in the olden days, so to speak, when we were doing three kilometers of roadway, we knew we could send out a mass mail out or something of that nature. Now it's getting more logistically, uh, it's more issues logistically. So that's why the social media component is getting more and more important for the town to get that notification out.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, um, my first question is for the, the per, the per, um, Mr. Loge. When you talk about an island, just so I can have a visual, are you talking about, say, the, um, what we, everybody else probably calls them roundabouts? Is that, uh, like on Southwood? Is that a, is that an island or is that a, give me an example of an island?
So your traffic islands are Southwood, Queensberry, Queensberry and Grafton. Those twelve, fifteen, twenty foot, uh, uh, one to Good Old Bullheart and one, one at, at the south end of the building.
Uh, so there's four examples of islands. It's a, it's a minimal diameter structure, concrete that, that is used to delineate traffic and try to get it to go into, and, and, and again, to, to control that level of traffic. Higher speeds are the roundabouts that you see out on the arterial. That's a, that's technically a roundabout, these are traffic islands that they're called. You see them in the city of Fredericton as well, down behind the legislature, there's these little, in this, and they're even tighter than what we have in, in our community, because they've, they're constrained by buildings and curbs and gutters. So they're even, they're even smaller with smaller lane parameters. So what we do in ours is we have a smaller middle section, but we have a mountable curb in the middle. And those are things that we would look at, you know, particularly even in this case with Mr. Clavoe, is if he has access for backing up a trailer or accessing a driveway that we can't address by moving, uh, the, widening out a driveway. Then we look at what is the mountable section of that middle island designed like so that you can actually ride over it? So those, those are things like that that we're looking to delineate. So, so we have some capacity, as I mentioned, to, to look at some onsite engineering if need be.
I'm just trying to get your mic on.
So that was my, I just wanted an example of one, and that's what I thought, because I went down Southwood today and I looked at the one on Southwood to see that there was a house across from it. And I'm glad that you're gonna go back and I think council will approve that you will go back and have the discussions. One of the, um, uh, things that I did notice though on Jenkins and what, and Leah Boulevard was the, um, town trail. And I wondered about, um, the safety issues of having the trail come out into the roundabout and how you're going to address that, because I think that is a, uh, you know, is, we're trying to slow down traffic, but at the same time, we have footpath, foot walkers coming out into a roundabout.
About, as it's designed and where the trail hits it, actually, that's, that's a physical measure that a pedestrian coming out sees as well as a traffic, a vehicle sees. So if you have no structure there, to me, it would be more dangerous to have a pedestrian coming out into an intersection with no visible structure. So the, 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 the key to the whole process is linking the trail to a, the side trail that goes along Gondola Boulevard so that they're not coming straight across into the intersection. So, so the, the, the next phases of this particular project, we'll see, not just the trail, the trail will be connected to go to the right if you're coming out towards the rest of Gondola Boulevard, where the trail exists now or is put on new. But eventually, we'll see a trail going to the left as well on, on, on the, uh, Leah Boulevard side. Okay? So, so the, the, uh, the, the idea that pedestrians, there's some control that we have there by them not going into a, a, a wide open intersection. Secondly, what we do is we work with the Director of Community Services and, and the, and the Dax of Transportation Network and we look at, is it a high level volume pedestrian access that's gonna be there? Should we look at things like the rapid flash beacons that we have, for example, on, on the Penning Gill down at Cedar Grove? Or the, you know, the push buttons that, that, that alert traffic? So, so the, the Community Services Group will let us know, okay, is it a heavily used trail, is it lightly used? What sort of protection is there? So, so again, we always have to recognize that as, as, as progressive, as, as, as busy as we think we are, technically, we're not that, it's not, the volumes aren't there that make it that dangerous. So we manage that risk by, by adding that additional safety measure, a push button, uh, 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 those types of things. Some places, they use it as even as simple as a, a, a gate that stops the people at the end of a trail, like you see at the Penning Gill, so that they know, okay, we have to stop, we have to maneuver to get in and out. That slows the, the pedestrian down enough to look both ways before they cross the street. So those are things that we take into account with design for active transportation.
Counselor Miller?
Uh, thank you, your worship, yeah, I was just, I'm just gonna finish up and, uh, from earlier for, for Mr. Clavoe. I'm glad we're gonna be looking at this and, and, because to me, the biggest part of our streetscape was to put the sidewalk in on the side and, and to fix the streets that were thirty some years old. Uh, because the only other roundabout we have on that whole stretch is down at Leah, so we've got that one at Leah and, and, and in front of Mr. Clavoe's house is kind of at the start of, uh, uh, of his road, uh, after connects there. So, yeah, I'm, I'm glad we're gonna at least look at it and if it needs to be brought back, because it's, um, it needs to work and yes, you're exactly right, I mean, I know, I won't make people's names, but I know people's driveways that are on the roundabouts. Down on, I call it Upper Queensberry, I know it's not that name. The one, the one right on regular Queensberry, and there's one that's actually, the driveway actually goes, it's actually on the roundabout. It's, it's cut right into it, but I mean, there's no curb, it, the driveway goes right in, but, uh, anything we can make this to, to, to make sure it works better for all and, and, yeah, the trails, when I look at the trails, people are gonna come off the, off the, the sidewalk for the trails and the sidewalks are a great addition down all that, that Boulevard. It's, it's, it's amazing walking there versus what it was fifteen years ago. So I, I'm glad we're gonna look at it and, and come back and, and see what can make it work and whether it's a slight adjustment or, or, or something. It's, uh, um, you know, the traffic in perspective isn't that bad on those streets, um, and the sidewalks are the big thing, so. Thank you, I guess we'll, we'll, um, see, see what comes out of that, but, uh, I'm glad we're gonna look at it, at least have the conversation to see what can be, what can work for everybody, uh, as well, because to your point, like if your driveway's there and if we need to be able to back in and make sure that everything still works properly and stuff, so, thank you.
And Counselor Luck?
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'll basically, um, Counselor Miller, um, basically said most of the things I just wanted to, um, to comment on, so I won't re- reiterate that. But I am really happy to, to see that we are going to be working with the resident to kind of make it a bit more palatable and, and user friendly for him. Um, I did drive by and I couldn't really envision where exactly it would be, because I guess the island that, um, was used as one of the examples on Southwood, I swear under my breath daily when I try and take that, because there's almost not enough space. So the people going through on Southwood don't realize it's supposed to be a kind of a circle and if I'm already in the circle, they don't seem to care, because they're going straight through, because it's, it doesn't actually have enough turn. So I just wanna also make sure that there's enough space to, to actually control the traffic the, the way we think it will. Because again, like I'm, when I was looking at the, um, the picture that you had given us, it almost looks like it, it's also cutting into some of your land. I'm not sure if that's the case or not. But again, I, I'd like to see us hopefully, um, work with you to try and figure out, you know, how it can, you know, be adjusted so it doesn't affect the usability of your, of your land. Thank you.
And Counselor Bigger?
Thank you, your worship, um, thanks for bringing this forward. I live just, uh, a couple of blocks from you. I live on, uh, the top of Lionel at Gondola Boulevard, so just, if you were leaving your place and heading down towards Quispampas Road, the island you referred to at Leah, there is, uh, or Laura, Leah? Laura, sorry. My ex-wife's name is Laura, so you know, I try not to go there. I hope that gets in the minutes, by the way. So anyway, I, uh, traverse that, you know, daily and, uh, I remember receiving a letter. We received a letter when traffic calming measures were going to be installed, uh, on Gondola Boulevard and it was quite a while before it actually happened, from the time at which we received the letter. So I can attest personally that efforts were made by the town long before I ever So I can attest personally that efforts were made by the town long before I ever conceived of being on council. That uh, you know, a letter was received and I, we were a bit quizzical about it at the time, in fact, because I couldn't quite figure out exactly what it. You know, I thought, well, we didn't, I haven't, we haven't been complaining about this or whatever, we had been sitting on our back deck all summer long complaining about the motorcycles flying down Gondola Boulevard, of course, so. And I will say that as far as, I don't, I guess nobody has to be convinced of the the measure being effective at calming traffic, it certainly does that. And you and I have spoken, Director of Engineering, and I have spoken uh just casually about how uh where you mentioned the uh, it's called the chicane, where the where the road narrows a bit. And uh there was a stop sign further down uh a little bit and that got removed, but it's obviously in consideration of this, because I thought, well, it seems like you've just traded one for the other, you took a stop sign out. Down here and then a couple of blocks down, we put in a traffic island, you know, the the kids and the people in their, you know, souped up Fast and Furious Honda Civics will still fly down to that traffic island and. Not stop till the last second and this is probab- this is all part of, as you said, this is the final phase of a a long, a larger process to kind of calm traffic there, so. Uh I also would say it, I I sympathize with what you're bringing forward, I think everybody does, uh and uh, but living on that property for six years or so now. Where I live, um it's been very effective, I think, uh the traffic island has been at calming the traffic, so. I uh I hope that it could be, you know, as Counselor Luck says, made palatable for for you. Uh but I'm I'm glad that we're working, you know, that's a long, straight stretch and there's a lot of people that fly down those roads and so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. Clavoe, on the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero, thank you for your waiting tonight, for your patience, we certainly appreciate it, have a good evening. We will move forward to, or back, I guess, to uh seven A, June fifteenth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting. Eight A now, sorry, I haven't uprooted my uh. Okay, so it's been moved, we had a mover, Counselor Miller, we need a secondary, we'll go to next in queue, that would be Counselor Donovan, on the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Eight B, June twenty third, twenty twenty one, special meeting, G and B's green paper discussion. Moved by Counselor Thompson. Would you please read the mo- motion?
I move that minutes be approved as prepared.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero, unfinished business, nine A. Status report, dangers and unsightly premises, there's a motion to be made. Moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, would you please read the motion?
Sure, Worship. Um resolution, the the staff meet with the town solicitor with instructions to proceed with issuing a notice to comply against the property of four forty six Gondola Point Road. In accordance with the provisions of the bylaw number thirty nine. A bylaw respecting respecting dangerous or unsightly premises and further that prior to enforcement, council review and approve any budgetary or um implications.
Thank you, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Olson, on the question.
Counselor Luck, thank you, Your Worship, I did have a question, I drove by and I'm just wondering, it, are are we talking about tearing the building down? Because, I mean, there's no power to it, it looks abandoned, I just didn't know exactly what we were paying to get done to it.
Yes, so Your Worship, the the unsightly premises by law, the first uh attempt is to make contact with the owner to secure the property against. Entry, de- fire, things of that nature, so that's their first goal. If they don't respond, then we would come before council with a recommendation to actually tear the building down if need be. That's why there's a second component that requires us to come before council for budgetary impacts, because obviously it's gonna cost a lot more to to tear a building down than just to have it posted for for s- a safe premises. Um ultimately, we would get reimbursed by the province as long as we follow the provisions, but that is correct, we would be uh potentially just uh demolishing that building as part of the unsightly premises by law.
Thank you. Motion is on the table, moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, uh seconded by Counselor Olson, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Nine B. There's a motion, resolution. Counselor Olson.
I'd move the residents from the Wellington Court area be advised that town staff met with representatives of the provincial department of environment. And the federal department of fisheries and have completed the necessary repairs under their direction. In addition, town staff will continue to monitor the area for evidence of erosion or blockage in the future.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Thompson, on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Uh item nine C, municipal election campaign issue staff reports. Number one, uh there is a motion. Counselor Olson.
I'd move council accept staff's recommendations and referrals concerning council's campaign issues as presented.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan, on the question. There are none, please vote now. Items moved, seven zero. Item number two, staff report from Director of Engineering and Works. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, Your Worship, um I'd move the council accept Mr. Loge's recommendation to refer his staff report concerning the following campaign items. Uh number one, additional sidewalks, walkability, speeding, condition of the Gondola Point Road unsightly premises premises. To the strategic planning process for further further review at that time.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, may I have a secondary, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question, uh Counselor Luck, just one second, there we go.
Thank you, Your Worship, this question is uh direct to the Director of Engineering and Works, my favorite person tonight. Um so thank you, I this this report is extremely helpful for being a newbie. Um and one of the things that I thought was really interesting, of course, and it's a hot topic, because of course speeding and traffic concerns. And one of the things, and again, I mean, you might not have it now, but I'm just wondering if perhaps if we could have it um provided to us at some point. Is the impact of speed bumps, like you did talk about some of the other traffic control measures and and different things that are happening, but I'm wondering. You know, what the literature shows about, you know, once the s- speed bumps are in, like it does talk about how um. You know, when you're looking at like the posted posted like kind of meter and how, you know, how it really hasn't actually done much to affect it. But I I couldn't really see what the data was showing in terms of the actual like speed bump, so anyway, I was curious about that. And then also in the report, it talked about um using different physical means um that were identified, I know some are more popular than others. Um and then basically using these to analyze, you know, what thresholds would be valuable, and I'm just wondering, um you know, especially um in the situation with Queensberry. Um you know, we've been doing it now for a number of of summers, I'm just wondering if there's something that we've learned, because we've tried different means, so is there one that's working better than another? Thank you.
And you're my favorite counselor asking questions tonight, too. The uh the the thing with the uh the speed bump results, actually, we are doing that review now, because as you mentioned, we've done a year of speed bumps. And then we did a year of speed bumps and chicanes combined, and now we flipped them. So we're gonna be looking at all three years together to show what the impact is, but at a preliminary level, what we've seen is that. When you look at two directional traffic on Queensberry Drive, we were finding that the chicanes are more effective. At long term speed reduction than the humps are. So what we're seeing at the humps, immediately before and after the humps, we're seeing a drastic reduction, and when I say drastic, you're talking. From a fifty two kilometer an hour to a forty six kilometer an hour. But um once you get thirty meters past the hump, so one house past the hump, they are back up to fifty fifty one kilometers an hour. With the chicanes, because they see them further down the road, this this impact is not as drastic in the first year that we've seen it. So instead of being down at forty six, it's maybe it's forty seven, forty eight, but that's maintained more throughout the street. Because they see these traffic uh the the visual breaks, okay? The 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 fly in the ointment is, and we've heard it from residents, is when somebody thinks they're gonna cheat the system and go right down the middle. And some, you know, as as Counselor Bigger mentioned, the Honda Civic souped up Fast and Furious Honda Civics, they go straight down the. The 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 corridor, thinking that they're gonna beat all of the issues. It's when they meet oncoming traffic, all of a sudden, everything grinds to a halt. So in the in the presence of two way traffic, it has the biggest impact are the chicanes. More prolonged throughout the length of the trial area, now that is one one sample that we did last summer, so this summer's sample is flipped. And we wanna see if that same results are re- repeated, so that's why I didn't include it in there, because it's really not com- completed yet, but generally speaking. That's what we're seeing from a physical measures perspective, is that the actual visual breaks are more effective than the humps are. And feedback from the residents is that even the people that live in front of a speed bump, they are, but they prefer the idea of the chicanes. Recognizing the fact that what is there now are traffic temporary islands, they're just the cones, the the candles that are there. But if we look at, for example, what Mr. Clavoe put in his presentation with the the islands, with trees and landscaping and and dress it up to a streetscape component. That is what they say, oh, well, that's not too bad, and they prefer that. So we're getting some 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 uh valuable information. Interestingly enough, we're probably getting as much feedback, people saying, I don't want any of them, I don't think there's a problem, this is just one or two people complaining. So it's all over the map, but generally speaking, the long term result impacts are those island, not the bumps, but the the chicanes that we see.
Uh Deputy Schreier, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, um my question is on the actual motion. It says that uh on site uh at the end of it, unsightly premises to the strategic planning process for further review at the time. We're a little bit far out for the strategic plan, uh the way I understand it, we're not gonna, it, we're going to tender, be next year before we even start on the strategic plan. So I'm just, you know, these are things that we've heard concern, so is there, some of them could go to the strategic plan, but I think some of them need to be pulled out. Like when we're talking about um speeding, I think that's an issue that some sometimes we can deal with these immediately in some way. So I'd hate to see everything grouped to go to the strategic plan that's a couple of years out and not be addressed.
So so from. From a staff perspective, all seven of these items are active, current active items that we will act upon at a staff level now. That we are not waiting for direction from council for a strategic, but it, they are strategic in the nature in that. What we're doing now, is it still appropriate, do we wanna change our approach, do we wanna make more of an investment in either of these things? For example, these unsightly premises, definitely, we're, we have a set policy set in place now, we ha- we had a motion just just previous to this, how we're gonna proceed, so that's not gonna wait. But but in general, the question about, for example, unsettling premises would be, do we. Uh increase enforcement, do we invest more money, do we eh do we ask for more bylaw en- enforcement officers in order to do this? So that has a strategic impact on the budget in the future, but as far as immediate issues, um though we're gonna continue to act on these files uh actively day to day, so.
Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Worship, uh question through to uh Mr. Loge. My recollection is that uh there was to be a formal meeting with the residents of Queensberry, and I was wondering if that has taken place place yet.
These things, these things. Um are really prohibiting a an effective meeting, I think I mentioned that the 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 one of the previous council meetings, we have done this exercise. Once before where we had a public session for the folks on Squ- Southwood Drive. It was very, very useful in that we had a lot of the neighbors together actually discussing the problems at hand. To the point that people were saying, so and so's kid is speeding, and you know, everybody sort of steps back a little bit, when they recognize that it's a neighborhood problem, it's much more effective. I know that most people are more familiar with the Zoom and the WebEx and they're they're not too shy about this, and we could probably undertake that type of a an exercise. Middle of the summer, the change in the COVID rules, we think it's 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 probably more, and we'll have a another set of parameters to to, as I mentioned earlier, to to show as examples. We think it's much more effective to have a face to face meeting when permitted in in the fall, so we haven't had any face to face meetings on Queensberry yet.
Thank you, on the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Moving on to staff report from municipal planning officer and land developments. Mr. Colburn.
Thank you, Your Worship. So through you, Your Worship, uh in response to the uh. The item that was put forward by the Deputy Mayor with respect to land development and being environmentally friendly and recognizing the importance of the environment. Uh in my s- put together a staff report that just like to quickly highlight some points in there and and just discuss a few things. As we talked about just previously in the presentation, obviously, the town has the ability through, again, the legislative contacts that we talked about earlier tonight. To be able to enact bylaws, so some of those bylaws would include uh the municipal plan, subdivision bylaws. As well as zoning bylaws, within those those documents, you can establish um content that addresses this particular item. Which I'm happy to say that in our current municipal plan, as I've indicated in my staff report, there are numerous items that focus on. Being environmentally friendly and protecting the environment and making sure there's a process in place. As we uh continue to to grow and develop, that we review these developments. And we put in measures to constrain the extents of which the impacts on the environment happen. In my staff report, I've taken it, looking at it from a couple, basically three stakeholders, if you will, that need to work together in order for this to truly happen. First of all, we have the province who has, as we talked about tonight, a length about providing the ability for uh local governments to enact bylaws. To control this this type of activity and how it happens, they also have their own sort of regulations that they enforce, so when you look. So when you look at water courses and wetlands, and they, they regulate and have jurisdiction over those, those significant provincial wetlands and water courses, any development that happens within thirty meters of those, obviously, the development has to go to the province, and the province reviews and sets terms and conditions on the developers. We undertake to communicate to the developer the need to approach the Department of Environment or the provincial authority having jurisdiction when it comes to development. So that happens through the Planning Advisory Committee, it happens through staff level. So there is that um, that process in place. How they enforce and react to that, obviously, that is at the province level. They have the regulations that they follow and they take those parameters. Second stakeholder I've indicated is the town. So the town, we do, as I've mentioned, a municipal plan, subdivision bylaws that we follow. And I've highlighted a number of sections in our municipal plan that look at um preservation of natural space and open space policies and and the processes that we go through, even in our terms of our vision statement. It talks about a natural environment that we want to protect and and we're known for. In page three of my, of my staff report, there's an image, unfortunately, I had hoped to be able to show her uh how this sort of has come together, but in there, there's an image that shows blue areas and green areas, which are water courses and wetlands and those types of things. Our municipal plan, one of the items that it talked about was uh stormwater, watershed and stormwater management. What we're seeing on the screen is an, is an initiative that we undertook with University of Nebraska Department of Forestry, and what that does is it actually highlights areas within the town that are wet areas. These are outside and above and beyond what's under the jurisdiction of the province. We use this tool that when all developed, all developments come to the town, whether it's a subdivision development or just a local development, in terms of business development, it all gets mapped in our G I S system. That's step one. The reason we do that is so we can actually overlay it, and now we have a visual tool that we can say, yeah, you might wanna put your road there. Nah, that property would probably may get flooded. We have used this tool over the past couple of years to actually see changes in the way development happens. Developers step back and say, oh, yeah, that's probably not gonna work. We've seen property lines change, we've seen roads change, we've seen areas protected. One that comes to mind really recently is Woods of Foresters Cove, the initial plan that came in, actually had the road going down through a drainage area that wasn't recognized by the provincial mapping. But using this tool that identified this as an area of concern, that's important to us as a, as a local community. When it rains, it actually helps aids in stormwater management, it's the natural drainage path. In the past, it may have been just to fill it in, pipe it, put a road over it, and move on. The initiatives of council in terms of the planning, the initiatives of staff working together, is moving this, this, these initiatives and these, these things forward. That's having an impact. The third stakeholder, and probably the most important stakeholder in this is developer. As much as we like to see development, work with developers, in some cases, we have developers where we're on the same page, there's other cases where developers are not so much on the same page. You might hear the passion in me, because this is a passion when it comes to planning. I hate to see the environment suffer when there's other ways of doing it. And that's the goal from planning and the documents that we have. As much as we can put this information before the developer, to work with them, to give them a heads up, to say, here's our areas concerned, that particular area you need to go talk to the province, this particular area you, you need to change the way you're doing things. What happens on the ground, a lot of the times, is in the hands of the developer. We have developers that approve that it works, that it works. You might go through the town and you might see a development that happens where the only the right of way is cut, there's actually ditches that are hydroseated and there's grass. It's protecting that particular area. What happens outside of the right of ways in terms of the properties getting cut, the zoning bylaw says you can only cut so many trees that you need to build a house, accessory structures to make use of the land, please keep as many trees as you can. So that becomes an enforcement issue from the town as well. So there's a number of, there's a number of stakeholders that need to work together, as much as communication, as much as education. This is where we're going, continuing to move forward. There's an interesting article that just came out just two days ago on, in CBC. And it talked about the pandemic and how there was always, there's this move for densification and bringing people together. Well, the pand- pandemic's kinda like pushed people away now. So what you're seeing is that in North America, there's a trend for people to move out of the cities and get into the rural and suburbia, suburbia. Will we ever control sprawl? I don't think so. But there's ways to make it better, and part of the ways, and one of the things they highlight is actually things that we're doing in Quispam. And when I read it, I was proud to see that those things are actually, I can point to things that are planned that reflective of that. Protecting the environment, protecting the, the trees, protecting the, the water courses and local drainages, not paving over them, not filling them in. Densification by, by allowing multiple structures, so in Quispam, you're gonna have a house, you can actually have a garden suite, new initiative in the municipal plan. Right? So we are working to protect the environment, and there's been leaps and bounds over the past couple of years of, by using the policies of council, working together, and also using our staff to put all this information together to help educate both developers and communicate with the province and all the stakeholders that need to work together to make this happen in an environment, environmentally friendly way.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn, and I'm going to go to the queue. And certainly, you and I have had discussions about uh climate change and impacts of uh, of that on our community. And uh also that we hope that everyone works to create a sustainable community. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, um, thank you for the, the information. It's valuable. There's so much in there, and like you say, when you start, it's, we could go on for days talking about the environment and um the issues that we face as a growing community to make sure that we are um protecting our environment. I mean, tonight, when we had the Honorable Gray Nicholas here today, I mean, he stated that Quispam says, um, you know, little, little lake, and I worry about that little lake. And um what maybe some developments over the years, and not to blame anybody, just development happens. You know, we, we need to protect that lake. Uh, I believe it's the only lake we have in Quispam sis. I, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know of any other lakes in Quispam sis. And then, of course, the Canobicas River, and you know, we've been having a lot of talks about the pumping stations and how we're gonna move away from those from the river to stop. So I, I'm really encouraged by what I see here, and I, I want to thank you and the staff for everything you're, you're doing to make it sustainable. The mapping, I think, was a brilliant idea. I don't know how long that's been um in effect, but to get that extra overlay, like you said, so what's really important to our town, I, I think that's valuable information. And um, uh, I think whoever had the foresight to um, to um partner with U M B was a great idea. And I think uh, kudos to you and the staff for that. Thank you.
Counselor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I just really wanna reiterate what Deputy Mayor Schreier just said is, I wanted to um just congratulate you on your passion for protecting the environment. It's very obvious, so uh, thank you for that. We had the right person for the job. Um, I found your report was very well-written and, and very, very informative, and I did wanna send kudos. I thought, I was very impressed with the project that was uh, um, um, put, you know, done in conjunction with U M B, looking at the wetlands and predictive streams mapping. I thought that was ingenious to be able to, you know, again, be very proactive. So anyway, I thought it was a great report, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Any other questions? I believe we have a resolution that we did not vote on. That Mr. Colburn be thanked. Uh, Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Colburn be thanked for his well-written report and his information be received and filed.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item nine D, Brook Street, Scarlet Drive, Colton Brook, uh, stormwater. And there's a motion to be moved. Counselor Olson.
Yes, I would move that council approve Part C of R F P number two oh two oh T Q oh seven dash twenty-four, Engineering Services, Stormwater Infrastructure Analysis and Improvements, Brook Street, Scarlet Drive, Colton Brook Road to C B C L, and that they proceed with Part C for an upset fee identified as fifty-seven thousand, six hundred plus H S T.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. Um, through you, your worship, I guess, you know, I understand all, all the, the uh little parts here, but it's also saying that Brook Street probably won't get done until twenty twenty-two. Is there any way that that possible for it to finish this year? Or is it just, just the timeframes included? I, I only ask cuz for those that've been here, it's been on our list for about three years, so.
Uh, when we, before we put the tender, when we finished this Part C that's on, on the agenda right now, we looked at the capacity of the construction uh industry to absorb a project of this nature and made a few inquiries to, to, to contractors to see what would be the best way to format this to guarantee us the best pricing. Um, and as you can see in the next, uh, gen, next agenda item, the next motion, when we actually went into tender, we actually, by, by phrase, forming it up in two parts with a completion no later than June thirtieth, we got a significant savings in the tenders that we could actually do all of what we wanted to do. If we had have proceeded to do some of Brook Street in this calendar year, that is before October thirty-first, we would have, we would have spent the same amount of money, but only been able to do half of the limits of Brook Street and not address this, the back half where the, where the storm sewer would need to be replaced. So we felt from, from a fiscally responsible approach, we were best, the best value is, and, and the people are, are generally understanding in that area that we, you know, we could do a full-scale, complete job, and it really, it'll be a, a benefit to the town, a cost-effective for the town by structuring it this way, so. We did, we did examine it, but um, we felt that it would be best to proceed in two phases.
Counselor Donovan.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, this is through you to the Director of Engineering. I feel like I already know um what it means, but I just, to make certain for myself, could you please explain to me what an upset fee is?
What we do is we go to an R F P for services, and when we have a general project, we, we identify in our request for proposals, an overall scope of work, and we ask them to bid on it, what the most they will charge us will be. So the upset fee is the most that, that a consultant can charge us for that scope of work. If we come and say we need to add a little bit of work, then they'll come back to us and say, well, you, you didn't have that in your initial description, it's gonna cost you more. So when we look at projects, um descriptions, we go to council, we wanna be very specific on the, that's, that level of effort that they have. They bid a maximum amount that they're gonna charge us, they don't go beyond that, so they don't upset that, that cost. So that's essentially what we look at for.
Thank you. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. There's a Part Two to that uh item. Moved by Counselor Bigger. Would you please read the motion?
Yes, thank you, worship. I move that council award tender number two thousand twenty-one T Q zero six dash twenty-five, two thousand twenty-one storm sewer upgrading Scarlet Drive and Brook Street to the low bid from L Sanford and Sons Limited, nine hundred twenty-seven thousand and three dollars and fifty-nine cents, inclusive of H S T. Extra budget costs are to be examined at year-end to transfer from appropriate reserve fund or to transfer from unallocated grant funding.
Moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, worship. Um, I just have a quick, quick question to the Director of Engineering and Works. Um, I just noticed on the um R F P for the uh, the upset, the, of the engineering, uh, C B C L. I just noticed Colton Brook Road is on there, but it's not on the, the second motion? Just wondering why that's not there.
They have the same thing. If, if we look at the first motion, that is a review, a drainage study review and analysis of the three catchment basins. So what they did is they looked at Colton Brook, Scarlet and Brook Street, looked at all three areas, assessed them from an infrastructure management perspective and said, what needs immediate repairs now? So that was the goal of that first project. The Part C component said, if there's a tender that needs to be released, prepare those documents. So the recommendations from the consultants was that Brook Street and Scarlet were the most uh, serious needs of repairs. Colton Brook, in its current condition, could stand as, from an asset management perspective, not to be rehabilitated in a few years. So we, we didn't feel the necessity to include that in the actual tender. So the Brook Street and Scarlet were the only streets that were identified for construction this year. Colton Brook will be reviewed every couple of years to see if the integrity maintained. Uh, if you recall, two years ago, we paved the Colton Brook Road, we actually paved over top of that, but while we were there, we did some work on the sides to help stabilize it. They did an interior inspection of that Colton Brook cross, uh, cross culvert, felt that it was stable enough and strong enough to withstand a few more years. Uh, the volume of traffic down there is low. If there's a development or something that occurs through that area that increases flows, we would probably have to look at it, but it's not likely in the next little while. So it was, the, we managed to do the, the two most important ones in this tender.
Thank you. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Correspondence, we've already dealt with that. Uh, bylaws, number eleven A. Proposed local improvement bylaw, number zero eleven dash twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Third and final reading. Counselor Luck.
I move that the third and final reading be given to Proposed Local Improvement Bylaw, number zero one one dash twenty twenty-one.
It's been moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Pardon me? It has to be read in its entirety? Would you like to read it, uh, Counselor Luck? Oh, okay, just go to the clip. Uh, start right at the very top.
Oh, sorry. Okay, bylaw number zero one one dash twenty twenty-one, a bylaw respecting the undertaking of certain works as a local improvement on various streets in Quispam sis.
of certain works as a local improvement on various streets in Quispam. The council of the town of Quispam, there and after called the town, under authority vested in it by sections one seventeen to one forty-eight of the municipalities act of New Brunswick, here an actor referred to as the act, enacts as follows. The chief administrative officer is hereby authorized to cause works to be undertaken on the streets listed in Schedule A attached to informing part of this bylaw. Two, the town does hereby order that the cost of the work set out in section one hereof be raised by special frontage assessment as set out in section four of bylaw number zero one one, a general bylaw relating to local improvements in accordance with provisions of the act. A, the owner's portion of the work shall be paid, I in a lump sum or I I, by equal annual installment payments over a period of ten years. The interest rate to be used in determining the annual installment is to be the average interest rate paid by the town for its most recent ten-year municipal bond sale. Investments in arrears shall bear interest at the rate of one and a half percent per month or part thereof until paid. B, all payments are due to the town on or before the thirty-first day of May in each year. Three, this bylaw comes into effect on the date of final enactment thereof. First, should I keep going? Okay, so first, read first time, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, read second time, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, read third time and enacted July twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. And that was a short one. Motion carried, seven zero. Moving down to new business. Layfield Estates subdivision phase three, PID number three zero two five seven nine seven six. There is a resolution. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move the council grant assent to the Layfield Estates Phase Three subdivision plan, subject to the execution of a standard development agreement so that the plan can be stamped and signed by the town clerk and development officer for registration in the provincial land registration system. The development agreement must include provisions regarding traffic calming measures for the street design and constructed prior to final acceptance of Phase Three by the town and the L P P obligations to be fulfilled by that time as well.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Oh, sorry. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, my question is, I'm looking at the map of the drainage and so in the red is the existing subdivision or the existing homes, so is there anything, any problems there with drainage? Cause I thought the light green was, I can't remember now, I have to go back to the other report. Could you just talk a little bit about the drainage? I want to make sure that it's all.
Your Worship, as a municipal planning officer mentioned earlier in the G I S that we have, what we've done is we've gone beyond the wetland mapping of the province. So what we actually do with the mapping that is produced from U N B is create a hydrogeological layer of predictive flood layer. So while the areas may be highlighted as areas of water, with proper stormwater management, storm sewer design, it can be managed. So the whole point is, as Mr. Colburn mentioned earlier, is we bring this to the attention of the developer, they come back to us with a design that incorporates stormwater management. So we can find subdivisions with water courses through them or wetland areas through them. If they deal with the province, they have certain components that they have to address. But from the town's perspective, if they get into these light green areas that you've mentioned or the light blue areas, that predictive stream layer then requires them to bring to the town stormwater management items. So that's how we interpret these particular drawings. So it doesn't, it's a flag for us to help with planning initiatives, but it's something that the developer undertakes as well. And any questions that goes forward too?
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. So on the image that's shown, just to build on what the Director of Engineering has mentioned, in this particular image, the red lines is the outline of the plan that's before council tonight for ascent. The purple colored lines is conceptual plan. So as I mentioned, everything that comes across planning desk gets mapped in here. That's the full build out proposed for that particular area. So those areas in the violet, purple color and you have dark blues going through properties, that's a question that'll come from planning back to the developer that'll say, how are you going to address that? Are you going to realign your road? Are you going to change those property lines? So that hasn't been submitted to the town for formal review at this point, but that is an item that will be highlighted through this process. So tonight, we're looking at the area that's in red. And if I could carry on, just one thing in terms of the traffic calming, when you look at the overall plan, the actual streets, local streets provide a connection from French Village Road to Bradley Lake Road. So as a point of reference, if we think about Southwood to the Vincent Road through south, or sorry, the Petengale Road to the Vincent Road, Southwood, Lexington, all through that particular area, that's something that we could envision here. So what we're, from a planning and engineering perspective, what we're saying to the developer is please tell us how you're going to mitigate that concern as part of your design right now. Are you putting in chicanes? Are you putting in different measures that we can do now prior to versus after the fact? So that's the reason that's in the motion.
So that's becoming a part of the plan, the development? Thank you.
That way it becomes a cost to the developer now as opposed to a cost to the town in the future.
On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Onto Queensberry Heights subdivision phase fourteen A, there's a resolution there. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, I will move that council grant assent to the Queensberry Heights subdivision plan, fourteen A, final plan, subject to execution of the standard subdivision development agreement with the town. So the plan can be stamped and signed by the town clerk and development officer for registration in the provincial land registry system.
It's been moved by Counselor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Luck on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item C, award of tender number twenty twenty-one, T Q zero one dash one, Roberts Lane Tender. The motion on the table. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Worship. I'd move council award tender number two O two one, T Q O one dash one, to the low bidder, Terra X, for the low bid price of one million six hundred ninety-seven thousand two hundred and ten dollars plus H S T.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Counselor Olson.
Move receiving file reports.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. This is arising from committee of the whole. There's a motion here. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Worship. I move that council appoint Aaron Kennedy as the acting chief administrative officer during the absence of the chief administrative officer Susan Deville due to illness. This appointment will be temporary and may be terminated or varied at any time by further resolution of council. Mr. Kennedy's current salary to be adjusted to reflect his additional duties by separate agreement and work plan with him.
It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. And the final item tonight, hoping that you have a good rest of your night and that you find joy in the rest of the week, could we have a motion for adjournments?
Thank you.
Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd move that the meeting be adjourned at nine forty-seven, sorry, P M. Thank you.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question, please Deputy Mayor Schreier is in favor. Motion carried, seven zero. Have a good night, everyone, safe travels.